Thing to order. Sharon, roll call please.
Also, member Alves.
Here.
Also, member Alves.
Here.
I can't hear Sharon.
Sorry. Councilmember Wernicke.
Here.
Councilmember Richards.
Can everybody else hear Sharon?
Yes.
Yes, I cannot hear you.
And Vice Mayor Hughes.
Here.
Do you hear me talk? I want to see if I could hear you.
Hello. Hello, hello.
Did you hear us say here?
I can't hear anybody.
If you're just joining, we're having a couple of technical difficulties, so just stand by and starting in a second.
All right. Roll call, please, Sharon. Now I can hear people.
Councilmember Alves.
Here.
Councilmember Wernicke.
Here.
Councilmember Richards.
Here.
Vice Mayor Hughes.
Here.
Mayor Derwin.
Here. Oral communications, this is the part of the evening when anyone can talk about a subject that is not on the agenda, realizing that we may not take action and we may not have an extended conversation, but we can listen. You can speak once for up to three minutes. Would anyone wish to speak under oral communications? Sharon?
Bob Turcot.
Bob Turcot.
Hi, um, two weeks ago after I shared my concern about wildfire safety ordinances being abandoned and reconciling the town's AD ordinances with the states, I was surprised to learn from staff, in fact, there is a wildfire ordinance that's being retained. This was perplexing to me because nothing in the written or oral presentation referred to this. The only reference to fire safety was our ordinances addressing emergency vehicle access. Is this the wildfire ordinance that was being referred to? Or is it something different? If different, please drag me to it. When asked about waiving our ordinances in favor of the state's four-foot setbacks, staff reported that a neighboring community tried to fight this and failed. And furthermore, was threatened with litigation by an outside entity had they been successful. In fact, setbacks, separation between structures, land use ordinances, are precisely the tools through which wildfire safety policies are implemented. The intensification of wildfires by structures is devastating. The latent energy represented by a structure is many times that of vegetation on the same footprint. That's why the National Fire Protection Association recommends fifteen-foot separation between sprinkled structures and thirty-foot separation, thirty feet between unsprinkled structures. The modification proposed by the planning department would allow eight feet separation. The town, of course, should comply with state laws, but just as it does for seismic safety ordinances and vehicle access ordinances, it should also retain our ordinances that reduce the devastation of wildfire, including building separation. Local jurisdictions are entitled to limit state mandates when necessary for life safety. The council needs to make this clear to staff and committees. Second point of clarification, I often encounter straw man arguments that advocates of fire safety are actually motivated by NIMBYism or want the town to simply ignore state mandates or want the town to act illegally. Let me be clear, of course, the town should make its best effort to comply with state law. The people with a hard job of revising our housing element should leave their biases and concerns about the rationality arena at the door, roll up their sleeves and do the hard work of producing the best possible product. At the same time, the town should also comply with state law regarding the safety element. It should follow the guidance of the Office of Planning and Research as specified in California code. It should conduct the long neglected hazard risk assessment, develop mitigation policies based on the findings, and implement the policies in the safety element and ordinances. And it should do this in an objective, unbiased, and thorough way. We heard an opinion from the town council two weeks ago that, quote, "I absolutely think we should roll the safety element into the housing element," end quote. This is exactly what to do if you want to subordinate safety to housing. And if you want to produce a result that doesn't have the confidence of the residents, the people who work on the safety element should be blinded to and insulated from housing concerns. Safety should inform housing, not the other way around.
Thank you. Are there any other hands up, Sharon?
No.
All right. Then we will move on to the next part of the evening. Tonight, we have three presentations. The first one is to honor our beloved Captain Christina Corpus. And before I do that, I see that we have a special guest. Sheriff, San Mateo County Sheriff Carlos Bolanos is joining us tonight. Thanks for coming.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor.
All righty, good to see you. Tonight, we are going to recognize Captain Christina Corpus. The extraordinary work is done for Portola Valley for these past four years. And we want to publicly thank her for her dedication, commitment, and trademark grace under pressure. In the many years I've served on the council, there has never been a sheriff captain or lieutenant assigned to Portola Valley with Christina's mix of law enforcement expertise, intellect, responsiveness, and compassion. She is the model for what a modern police officer should be. For a little background on Christina, she started her career with the San Mateo County Sheriff's Office in 2002 as a correctional officer and has worked in control, corrections, community policing, the CERON, that stands for Community Alliance to Revitalize Our Neighborhoods Program, transportation and court security, as well as holding board positions at bodies, including the Service League of San Mateo County. She has a BA from Union Institute and University, an MA from the USD School of Law, and most recently, she completed an MS in Law Enforcement and Safety Leadership, also from USD. Christina, we're very excited for your new opportunity in Millbrae, and we wish you nothing but sunny skies ahead. But we're also kind of heartbroken to see you go. And I'm glad that Carlos is here tonight to hear this. Would any of my colleagues like to say a few words? Jeff?
Thank you. I just want to echo the mayor's words. Christina, we will miss you. But we do wish you the best in your new assignment. Christina has done tremendous work in promoting the safety and well-being of our community and for which we thank you. She's also behind the scenes in a time when law enforcement is being forced into some reckonings nationwide. She has been a very, behind the scenes, has pushed for responsibility and accountability for police departments, something that I think is critical to the trust and safety of our communities. And so I thank you for that as well. So again, I wish you all the best and look forward to hearing more from you in your new post.
Anyone else? Craig?
Um, yes, I just like to add to the thanks. I think Christina, in addition to all of the things that have been said about you already, one of the things that's been super helpful during your tenure is your connection within the sheriff's department and your ability to put us in touch with whoever we need to, when we need to, within the sheriff's department, depending on what issue comes up, whether it be license plate readers, fire safety, diversity issues, you name it. You know, I think my position is liaison with our bicycle and pedestrian traffic safety committee. There's a lot of interaction with the sheriff's department and under your leadership of our relationship. I think the policing has been better than we've had in many, many years in Portola Valley. The services for residents have just been above and beyond. So thank you very much and hope to see you again as you continue to move ever onwards and upwards. Someday, maybe you'll be back in our neighborhood.
Yeah, well, I echo everything that's been said. Christina, I really appreciated your professionalism and your approachableness. I think it was so nice to have someone to call, to talk things out with without thinking, oh, my God, this is a scary police person we have to deal with here. This is, you're a real person and it was really, it was great. It felt great for the entire community, really. So I want to thank you a lot for that.
Jeremy?
Well, I have really been so fortunate as a talent manager to, in almost my entire time in this community, work with Captain Corpus. I think I've been totally spoiled. I echo what all the council members have said. I will miss our varied conversations on how to make Portola Valley a safe, connected place, how to find ways to engage residents on issues of import, make introductions to the new deputies who came into town and your sage advice at times. I will miss you. I hope you stay connected to us. I'd also like to say appreciate Carlos Bolanos, Sheriff Bolanos, assigning Lieutenant Mark Myers as our interim. I really enjoyed the interactions so far and look forward to the permanent addition to the Portola Valley team here. So thank you. Thanks, Christina.
Anyone else? Okay, Christina. Good luck. Good luck.
Thank you so, thank you so much. I appreciate it. It's been, it's been a pleasure working with all of you, getting to know all of you. Portola Valley is lucky to have each and every one of you. I want to thank the sheriff for all of his support. Jeremy, thank you for all of those conversations and working as a team with me. And I will miss you guys, but you'll be in good hands with Lieutenant Myers and then whoever the sheriff appoints next. I assure you of that. And again, it's just been really a pleasure and it's been an honor hearing the kind words that you had for me tonight. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Now we'll move on to presentation number two.
Mayor Derwin, I'm sorry to interrupt. I think that sheriff did have his hand up at one point. He lowered it, and I don't want to put you on the spot, sheriff, but I guess I put you on the spot. You're still there.
Hi, Jeremy, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you for putting me on the spot, Jeremy. I'm, I'm used to that. No, I just wanted to say thank you so much to the Portola Valley Council for always, you know, welcoming our folks and treating them like family. And as Captain Corpus said, I'll make sure that I appoint a top-notch individual to continue to take care of a community that I, that we consider our own. So thank you for all that you do to support those of us in public safety.
Thank you. Righty. Our second presentation is another May is Mental Health Month item. Ellen Tuffin, who is a commissioner with the San Mateo County Commission on the Status of Women, wanted to come tonight to inform our community of all the mental health-related events offered by San Mateo County Health Department in May. And again, because May is mental health month. Ellen? Oh, you're muted.
My apologies. I'd like to thank the mayor and the council members for allowing me to speak for a couple of minutes tonight. As the mayor spoke, I am here as a commissioner on the county, San Mateo County's commission on the status of women. On behalf of the commission, we want to thank the town of Portola Valley for acknowledging that mental health and freedom from substance abuse issues is fundamental to the overall health and well-being for all our community members. As a commissioner, I would like to raise awareness of the disfortunate impact the pandemic has had on women. Although women comprise thirty-nine percent of the workforce, they were sixty percent of those who lost their jobs. Pregnant women and those with young children are experiencing a three-to-five-fold increase in self-reported anxiety and depression symptoms. And tragically, women have been the target of a dramatic increase in domestic violence during the pandemic. So as we recognize, women have bore a great deal of the brunt of the pandemic. So during these unprecedented times, and thankfully, they are getting much, much better from stress, sadness, and anxiety. So what we're urging women and their daughters to do is to seek out professional help. That it's not a sign of weakness, but it's a sign of strength. Practicing self-compassion is a must. Too often, we are kind to others and dismissive to our own distress and needs. So what brings me here today is to talk about signing on to the San Mateo County Mental Health Month website and feel feeling free to engage in some of the activities that they are being offered. Some of the activities include yoga, pet therapy, meditation, youth-led discussions, and raising awareness about anxiety. So I'd like to close my small talk and say thank you for allowing me to address this very important topic on behavioral wellness. And if you could, hopefully can encourage your residents to do so. Thank you.
Thanks, Ellen. What is that website address?
Oh, I'm sorry. It's
Okay. We'll get that out in our newsletter tomorrow.
Thank you.
Are there, do any of my colleagues have questions or comments? Well, thank you, Ellen, for coming and raising this topic we talked about at last, at our last meeting as well. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for having me.
Our last presentation is from Sam Trans called Reimagine Sam Trans and who is going to present?
That's going to be me, Amy Linnahan, and my colleague, Millie Tallis.
Okay, Amy Linnahan and Millie Tallis will present?
Yes.
Get away.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor, council members. My name is Amy Linnahan. I am a public affairs specialist with Sam Trans. Just wanted to thank you for allowing us a little time tonight out of your agenda to give you an update on Reimagine Sam Trans. We are in phase two of our project. So our goals tonight are to provide you an overview of the three bus network alternatives that we've come up with. Get your feedback and go over some of the possible changes for bus service in Portola Valley. We'll also talk about the ways that members of the public can engage with us and provide their feedback on those alternatives and some of the proposed changes. Before I turn it over to Millie for her presentation, I just want to say that the thing you see tonight is final. These are proposals and we are here to take feedback, answer your questions. We won't even be making any final decisions. And the decisions that we do make are going to be based on feedback that we get at meetings that we have, like the one we're having tonight. So we do welcome your feedback and we're happy to answer any questions you may have. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Millie to run through the slides.
Okay, thanks, Amy. Hopefully, everyone can hear me and see the slides. But I will just start, and maybe I should introduce myself fully. My name is Millie Tallis and I'm a principal planner on the Sam Trans planning team. And just for a little bit of background, Reimagine Sam Trans is what we're calling the comprehensive evaluation of our entire bus system. And we have three goals for this work. The first is to improve the experience for our existing Sam Trans customers. The second is to grow new and more frequent ridership on our bus system. And the third is to build our efficiency and our effectiveness as a mobility provider. And like anyone who was doing projects in the last year, you know, we really had to explore and reflect on what, how COVID-19 and all of the sort of residual impacts of COVID-19 may have affected our project. And after doing that, we feel that, you know, really focusing on our existing Sam Trans customers, many of whom turned out to really be those essential workers that we were very reliant upon for the last year, is really more important than ever. We see a little bit more uncertainty than we were expecting around, you know, attracting new riders as people are just a little bit more hesitant about getting on the bus or getting on public transit. But we're hopeful that that will change and that it is possible to attract more frequent riders. And then, you know, I think the last year has shown us that it is also more important than ever to really be efficient and effective with our resources. So as I mentioned, we were, we launched, well, I think I mentioned this, we launched the project in summer 2019. And we're about halfway through. We did a lot of public outreach. We did existing conditions analysis. And we spent the last winter designing these three bus network alternatives, which is what we currently have out for public input at this, at this moment in time. Looking ahead, we will be spending the summer taking everything that we heard and developing one new preferred bus network. We will have another round of public outreach and then seek our own board's approval and adoption of that new bus system before beginning implementation in summer 2022. And so I somewhat mentioned this, but you know, there was a lot of work that informed the alternatives, including existing conditions analysis, what's working and not working about our system. What are the community's priorities for Sam Trans? And what are both riders and non-riders perceptions and desires for transportation? And I think importantly, we worked with our board and our stakeholders to develop four guiding principles for how we would design these bus network alternatives. The first is, again, to employ customer-focused decision-making, to design service that can be reasonably delivered by our workforce, to be an effective mobility provider, and to provide transportation services that support the principles of social equity. And we did a lot of work to really understand the areas of our county where concentrations of households live who identify as racial and ethnic minorities, who are paid lower wages or who don't, or who don't have access to their own vehicle. And that really has informed a lot of the work that we've been doing with the alternatives. So I'm just going to quickly give you a flavor of the themes of our alternatives. We're looking for input from the community about which one of these really resonates with them. But the first one emphasizes direct and high-frequency access to places within our county. The second improves connections to rail and to our region. And the third retains geographic coverage of service within the county. And I would encourage or invite any of you or any of the community members to visit our website, reimaginesamtrans.com, to really learn more about each of these, these alternatives. But I did want to focus tonight on our approach to school-related service. And so this slide describes that approach. And I think it is important to mention that in each of our alternatives, we are prioritizing equity areas or high-need routes. And these are routes that serve neighborhoods that have the characteristics of lower income or without access to a car or racial or ethnic minorities that I mentioned. And, you know, we're looking, I think, first at opportunities to consolidate trips. And this is highly dependent on ridership and tends to vary annually. So it's something that we will, I'm sure, revisit every year. And the second part of our approach is consolidating routes. So there are actually ten examples of this proposal throughout our system where we have identified two routes that serve the same school and can become one route because they have a capacity available on the bus. And the third approach is eliminating routes, which is our least preferred and least utilized option. We do have two routes out of, I believe, thirty-seven school-related routes that we run that are proposed for elimination, potential elimination. One of them is in Portola Valley and the other is in Menlo Park. And we can, we'll talk more about that on the next slide. But I think it's, it's also worth saying that all of our school-related routes that average fewer than fifteen passengers per trip are the ones that we're really looking for opportunities to either consolidate or be more efficient or in some cases, elimination, unless they serve, again, one of those equity or high-need areas. So looking at specifically about the potential changes in Portola Valley, we currently do not have any local routes in Portola Valley, but we have two school-related routes. And what we are proposing is elimination of Route 85, which serves Ormondale Elementary School and has an average of fourteen passengers per trip. We're also proposing elimination of morning trips only on Route 87, which serves Woodside High. But we would propose to keep the afternoon trips, which has, which have typically about three times as many riders as the morning. The morning averages just six passengers. But we would, again, propose to keep those afternoon trips on Route 87. And of course, we acknowledge that there are riders in Portola Valley and that there are students who are making use of these routes. But again, we are very much trying to be equity-focused with our alternatives. And the challenge that we face is that school service is very resource-intensive. And when we look at the ridership and the cost of providing these services, they are some of the least productive. And I think it's, you know, just for comparison, because we really look at the data and, and look at the comparisons. The average ridership on all of our school-related routes is twenty-four passengers per trip. So I'm just going to kind of wrap up and we can absolutely have questions and discussion, but want to reiterate that public input on all of our proposals is being accepted through May 31st. We encourage folks to visit reimaginesamtrans.com or they can call our customer service team if they don't have access to the internet or would prefer to speak to someone on the phone. We also are having many meetings like this. We're doing a limited number of pop-up events, but quite limited because of the pandemic and trying to make use of social media as well. And this is just a screenshot so that everyone knows, once you go to the website, this is the button to click on to give us your feedback. And that is the end of my presentation. So I'm, I'm happy to take comments or questions.
Okay, thank you, Millie. Sharon, are there, well, right away, we're going to do the, excuse me. First, we're going to do the council. Craig?
Hi, thanks for the presentation. That was helpful to understand what you're, what you're looking at and contemplating. I have a question. So clearly, you look at existing ridership numbers when you're looking at, you know, what to reduce and where to, where to consolidate routes, as you said. How do you do the opposite of that? Let's say you do remove this existing route. And four years from now, we have an entirely different high school population with completely different kids from what we have now. And they all want to ride the bus. How would you know that in order to reinstate the route?
Well, I think we would know it, well, we could know it in a few different Well, I think we would know it, well, we could know it in a few different ways. We could know it based on hearing from your town council, from Woodside High. Or from Ormondale. We actually spend a lot of time trying to stay in as close communication with the schools as we, as we can. It has been a little bit of a challenge getting in touch with them right now, which is, I, I think, kind of understandable as they all. Are trying to figure out how to bring students back, you know, and, and really, you know, pivot from the last year, but. But we stay in contact with the schools and as, you know, as you mentioned, the tough thing about. School service is that the ridership really turns over, I mean, every few years. And we have, you know, reimagine SAM Trans is. A really big project that the, that our type of agency only does every ten years, but we look at school service every year. And so this is not the last opportunity to make changes and. There is a fresh opportunity every single year, every single school year.
The, the other question that I had is about our, I'm sure you're aware of the fact that all of the towns and. In the state of California are about to enter into an update of their housing elements and plan for. You know, a lot of new units being constructed and we're no exception. How, how do you, how does SAM Trans anticipate being involved? In that process, both from a planning point of view, but then also as we actually execute on those plans and build those housing units and have more demand. For services like public transit. Tying into that whole coming housing cycle. If you do this once every ten years and that's happening within the next ten years.
Yeah, well, I, again, we have opportunities to make changes to our routes three times a year. So although this kind of large scale project is only typically done every eight or ten years, there are more regular opportunities. And, you know, we had a call with Jeremy to learn more about your upcoming plans and I think we would. Just seek to kind of continue that conversation regularly so that we can learn what's in the pipeline and how. Where there might be opportunities for us to, to respond.
Thank you. Couple of questions, that, that ridership number, those ridership numbers you gave for Ormondale and for Woodside High. How, how stable are they kind of year to year? And then how stable are they day to day? Or is it, is it sort of pretty other? Fourteen riders to Ormondale pretty constantly every day, or does it go from five to fif- five to twenty over, over the course of a week or?
You know, that's a good question. I think it's pretty stable. I mean, I think that there are. There is a trend of fewer students in the morning than at the afternoon on both of those routes. And that is actually a trend across a lot of our school related routes, you know, parents can drop off on the way in and then on the way to, to work. You know, when, before the pandemic. And then would rely more on the bus in the afternoon. And then in terms of kind of year over year. We actually have pulled some historical data on these routes and wanted, and are planning to get it over to Jeremy, who actually requested it. And, you know, it's pretty stable. We have actually seen a little bit of increase. In the last five years, but it's in the ballpark of one or two riders a day increase.
Thank you. And one follow up. Are there alternatives? I mean, does SAM Trans ever do things like sort of smaller, like, like smaller buses or vans for, for routes like this? Could, is there, would there be a way to put sort of a big van on one of these routes part of the time?
So this is a question we get asked a lot and I think it's not. The answer is yes, but I think the asterisk is that. The main driver of the cost of these routes and why we're so constrained is not this vehicle size, it's the. Wonderful bus operator that we have. And so we get this question a lot about can we just run smaller vehicles and be more efficient? And I think in some ways, yes, but not in like the most constrained. You know, not with the most constraint factor, it doesn't, it doesn't. Help us around that one.
Got it. Thank you.
So Jeff, we have to wait till their driverless bus vehicle.
They're, they're coming. I'm sure they're coming.
Sarah, did you have your hand up?
My question was the one that Jeff just asked about different sized vehicles. I guess one thing that I, that I'm noting is you said that this type of assessment, this level of assessment. Only happens about once every ten years. And so. I mean, does that mean our next opportunity to really advocate for? You know, change here is, is a decade from now, like, how do you see this process? In the years to come?
Yeah, no, I. The answer is no, we do make changes to our service regularly to try and respond to changes. Particularly with the school service. So this is absolutely not the last opportunity. It's sort of just. It's such a large project to look at every single route in the system and see how it all comes together. That that type of work only happens every ten years or so typically for agencies like us, but. But no, not the last opportunity to look at more kind of targeted community level. Changes or, yeah, improvements.
I'm also just curious, like buffing, you know, at a, at a neighbor in town. In Woodside, they have a similar small community. I mean, were, were they impacted? With cut, doesn't sound like they were impacted with cuts, if only two out of thirty seven were cut or being proposed to be cut.
Well, I believe that Route eighty seven, eighty seven also serves Woodside. So, you know, that same proposal that would, would affect Portola Valley also would affect Woodside.
But Woodside Elementary? Do you know?
I do not know, and it's possible that we don't serve Woodside Elementary. At all, there are a lot of schools that we, we, we don't serve at all. I, I can look into that, though.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, just one question. I see now these, these routes have been in service for quite a few years. Have you seen a, it was in a time at which these were, they were actually. Viable routes in the past? I mean, don't know if you have the data for that far back, but. Or have they always been way, way and woefully underused last?
They have always been under our sort of service standard. And like I said, they actually have increased a little bit in recent years, but it's in the magnitude of one or two riders a day.
Great, thank you.
Hey. Now we go to the public, the community. I'm certain there are questions, Sharon.
Rita, comment.
Okay, Rita.
Hi, thank you for taking my call, my, my comment. In your meeting, your public meeting at five thirty, you alluded to Portola Valley having. The parents possibly having some more flexible time and more resources to take their kids to school. And I don't know if you've talked to Roberta, the head of our school district. About the increase of number of kids that are in our school district. And when my daughter is now almost eleven and when she would have gone to kindergarten at Ormondale. That was to be the largest kindergarten class in, you know, many, many years. So all of those kids are now getting old enough to then, you know, be able to take the bus on their own. And, and, you know, move on at a time when this bus service is being reduced or, you know, being cut. You know, hopefully you'll have a chance to talk to Roberta about the many children. I think there were about eight hundred and fifty homes that have been sold in Portola Valley in the past ten years. And have those numbers along with the numbers of how many kids are actually in Portola Valley to do some planning. Because it would be a shame with these Rena numbers that we're supposed to be doing for housing. You know, we have not a whole lot of infrastructure. I'm not speaking for the council, just as a resident in town. We don't have a whole lot of infrastructure, but this is something that we have to offer to the future of Portola Valley. And it would be a shame for it to be just lost. Thank you for listening.
Thanks, Sharon.
Kristy Corley.
Kristy?
Yes, thank you for taking my comments here. I guess I'm wondering what marketing did you do with Ormondale and Corder Madera parents to increase the ridership? In the past is my, one of my questions, and I'll just kind of say them all. We pay taxes to the county to, for our bus routes and I think it. Parents that drive their kids to our high school is in a different city. We do not have a high school. So freshman and sophomore year, parents are driving both ways. And it was nice to see that the buses were running at least halfway through my kids' high school years. Let's see. School routes can only be evaluated one time a year, so does that mean that you would evaluate? Portola Valley in one year? And then. In the earlier talk, you said that some bus systems can be by appointment and is that an opportunity? I, I, it's not ideal, but if somebody, an elderly woman, man needed to get somewhere, this is really. Not only for students, but also for people that don't and can't drive cars. And then I'm concerned about the Rena numbers and we, we bring in for ethnic. Reasons, we are going to be adding to. The city two hundred and fifty-three houses on top of the eighteen hundred houses. And we want to make sure that people in affordable housing can get to their jobs. And if you take it away, I'm not sure that that would be equitable. Thank you.
Millie, did you want to respond?
Would you like me to respond? I'm happy to, if you'd like me to. So I wrote down. Marketing to students and I also wrote down the by appointment type of. Service and thank you for attending our community meeting. We actually just think, if folks don't know, we did have a community meeting for South County. From five thirty to six thirty and many folks did attend. Which we appreciate. So the by appointment type of service, I think you're referring to our kind of on demand service that we are. Exploring, bringing to some parts of the county. And this is something that if we try it in more parts of the county, we are really eager to learn. When it, when and where it really works the best. This is an example of kind of a smaller vehicle. Type of service that could be booked. In where trips can be booked in real time. And I think the other thing I just want to point out, just make sure everyone is aware. We do have our paratransit service, our ready wheels service, which not everyone qualifies for. But does include, the service area does include Portola Valley. And so I would just encourage folks who think that they know someone who might benefit from that type of service. To, to remember that that exists for really point to point trips for people who qua- who qualify. And then in terms of marketing to schools. I hate to say it because so many, the schools are relied on for so many things, but we really do rely on our schools, our school partners to try and get the word out. To their students, they're the best, you know, connection that we have to the students at the schools. So we do look to our school partners to really try and make sure that parents are aware of the services that are out there. We also have a youth mobility coordinator, whose, whose job is it to, it is to try and get the word out about service. That, that youth can take. And we have, you know, special fare products for, for youth where it's cheaper. And, and different, and different pass products. I hope I answered all of your questions.
Okay, Sharon, is there another hand?
Karen Bechtel.
Karen.
Thank you, Mayor. Hello, everyone. Council members, you've raised a lot of the questions and comments that I wanted to raise and. I just want to say thank you for that and it really builds confidence in our council when you hear the concerned citizen, the. Concerned you have being spoken by your representative, so really appreciate that. But I think I need to go just one step further and take a moment to raise a question and advocate for whether or not. The way SAM Trans is proposing to take this equity lens is tipping the equity scale appropriately. And, and I say that very carefully and very thoughtfully, but we already had minimal service. In school only service in our community. And perhaps I'd like to ask whether there's an opportunity still to look at afternoon only service. The way it's being proposed for the high school perhaps as a way of still having an eye toward equity. But also not leaving an entire community out of the service area completely. I, I think it's important to keep your residents feeling supported by your system. And wanting to continue, to continue supporting your system as you need additional resources. And I think knowing that there's something in our area helps that very much. I'll use an example, knowing that I got a great email in response that apologized for the oversight. The fact that an email went out about the public meetings and Portola Valley and Woodside were listed nowhere on them. We were just absent and it was really striking as someone who was looking at it thinking, my gosh. We're part of this area and we don't even have a meeting to go to. And we're losing, excuse me, we're losing our service. So I think these are sort of the bigger meta issues that I want to raise to SAM Trans verbally. I've certainly filled out the survey. And I wonder when you talk about consolidation as a strategy. If consolidating that high school, elementary, middle school afternoon route somehow in a new way. Could also be on the table. Because what happens here is maybe not that we don't have access to cars, but to give a little finer detail. You know, you have two parents working who can't get to a kid at school. Our district is spread out over a huge geography that includes not traversable distances by foot or bicycle. I live up near Skyline. My kids go to school out on Alpine Road. So we can't get to each other anyway but a motorized vehicle. And, you know, I went to Kenyatta for two years while my husband was working. And that's made possible because my kids had a Clipper card. And in the afternoon, those kids, when needed, when we can't do all the arranging we're used to having to do for car pools. Because we don't have other public transportation options in the area, they could always get to the library from school. And that is just, it's a really huge benefit. And it's not what you might naturally think of when you think of needs in the community and whether or not transportation is important. But it is, it's really important and it really serves a key function for our kids. Who also don't have a lot of close by after school options. So I just, I just want to make sure all of that is bubbling up somewhere in the conversation to be considered fairly. And if it, if it means more conversations with the school district, I'm hopeful that Roberta and her board would be willing to have those conversations. Before you finalize, because I also hear you saying that there are ways to bring it back. But there's certainly a piece of me that feels like once it's gone, that's quite the hurdle. And if we don't have to absolutely lose everything we've had, which was already very little. It might be great to keep the most important, most basic service that you can provide. So that's my appeal and I. You both, Amy and Millie, for multiple opportunities to be involved and I'll leave it there. Thank you.
Thanks. Sharon, are there other hands up?
There are no additional hands raised.
Okay, I'll bring it back to the council.
Madam Mayor, would you mind if I just respond to that last comment?
Absolutely.
Quickly, so I think. The idea of. Keeping something like afternoon service only on the Route eighty five is, is something that we can certainly, I, I wrote it down. I think we can certainly explore it. And then I believe Karen mentioned something that did pique my interest about. Possibly. Consolidating service to multiple schools. And this is something that we've actually heard a lot of reservations from parents about the idea of like elementary school kids riding with high school kids. But if this is something, I should say, parents countywide. But this is something, if this is something that parents, which I know is not a monolith, but if parents in Portola Valley felt. A little bit more comfortable with, that I think is something I would be valuable to know in the survey. Because we might be able to preserve more services, there was more comfort around different age groups sharing the same vehicle. So I just wanted to put that out there.
I had, was mute because my dogs were barking. Those were two excellent ideas. Now, did I see somebody's hand up of one of my colleagues? No, it's Jeremy's moving around a really lot in his seat. And it looks like his hand, but it's actually his head. So what is the, what are the next steps here? What are the next steps for us, Millie?
So our survey is open through the end of the month and I would just encourage folks to go to reimagine samtrans.com and where you can find the link to the survey. And then after the survey closes, we will be. Head down, reading all of your comments and from around the county and trying to piece it all together into the best possible network this summer. And then happy to come back in the fall and share with you what our actual final proposed network. Would include.
Okay, so our residents have a few weeks to respond to the survey. Okay, thanks. Thanks so much. Okay. Moving on to the consent agenda. So in the consent agenda. I'm just going to read it because I can't remember. I'm so tired today. I have to apologize to all of you. I'm really, really tired. On the consenting agenda, the, all the items are voted at once by the body. Unless a member of the body, where the body. Requests that an item be considered separately. However, members of the public. May comment on any item on the consent calendar before the body votes. You may comment for up to three minutes. Sharon, would anyone wish to comment on the consent agenda?
There are no hands raised.
Okay, colleagues, I think Jeremy. Wanted to comment. Yes, Jeremy?
Wanted to make a brief comment related to the minutes is the council members will have noted that there are two minutes for the first time in our agenda packet. The new addition is action minutes. The council requested this a few months ago in a previous council meeting. Our new transcription service is putting these together for us. These are very useful. Wish just to see the machinery of the actions that occurred during a council meeting. Will continue for. For. For, for a time into the future, the, the two, as is. See how the council likes it. And if there's any need to make any reams or changes, we will entertain that conversation at a later date. Thank you.
Next, Jeremy. Would anyone wish to pull something from the consent agenda? Okay, does anyone have a motion to approve the consent?
So moved.
Greg, is there a second? Sarah, second discussion. Roll call, please. Sharon?
Councilmember Alves.
You didn't.
I saw it. Councilmember Wernikoff.
Hi.
Councilmember Richards.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Hughes.
Hi.
Mayor Derwin.
Hi.
Okay, moving on to the regular agenda. Item number nine. Is a recommendation by the town manager and the Public Works Director. Adoption of resolution designating the road remnant for open space purposes.
Thank you. I'm going to take the lead and Howard Young, the Public Works Director is here to answer any additional questions. I think we're also joined tonight by two valued members of town committees. Nona Trurello and Judith Murphy, who were instrumental in, in helping us put this together. So I think this is a familiar item for the council, so I do want to keep my presentation relatively brief. But the council directed staff at a recent council meeting to put together the resolution in front of you tonight. Related to designated open space uses for the road remnant property. As I noted, as staff was developing both the resolution and the map, we worked with both Judy and Nona to ensure that we. Got this right, including maximizing the amount of property that would be included in the open space use portion of the map and resolution. I do want to note that the map did change from the last time you saw it to today as part of those conversations. When we presented this information on December 9th, 2020, it was a smaller area. We received no comment at the meeting or at the time. We didn't move forward at one point thinking that that was. Going to be present, but we made determination during subsequent conversations that we wanted to expand the, the borders of the property. So in front of you tonight is the resolution for your consideration. And approval. And I'm sure Nona and Judy might want to say a few words. Howard, is there anything you'd like to add?
Nothing at this time.
Thank you, Howard.
Thank you.
Back to you, Mayor.
Alrighty. Would the count, would Jeremy, do you suggest we first hear from Nona and Judy before we hear from the council?
Yeah, if they, if they'd like to speak, if either of you want to say anything, please feel free to raise your hand. Otherwise, we'll just note that the work is satisfactory.
Okay, would anyone like to speak?
It's like Judy's up.
Good, Judy.
Hold on, Judy. You, you should be able to unmute at your end, Judy.
I did, and then it bounced me off again. I was just saying, I think it would be more appropriate for me to say something after your discussion and after you take some action, because I'm most going to want to thank you for something you've done and you haven't done it yet.
Fair point. So should we go ahead? Council members, do you have any questions? All right. Are there any members of the public who have questions or comments? Sharon?
Helen Quinn.
Okay, Helen Quinn.
Actually, it's Daniel Quinn. Dan is going to speak.
Hi, this is Dan. I first want to thank you guys for doing this. I really appreciate it. I like the larger area and I like the work that the town staff and council have done and especially Judy and Nona. Thanks for getting them involved and thank you too for, 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 for working on this. I do think it's appropriate to wait for the general plan upgrade before casting this in concrete, but I, but I'm hoping for a little bit more. Guidance from the council. The, the, where our number seven says staff will provide the town council with recommendations relating to the road, road remnants permanent zoning designation. But obviously staff doesn't lead this, the council leads this, the town leads this. What is the council's guidance? When the count, when the staff is going to help prepare the general plan. And I would really hope that the council tonight could say it is our intention to go for a permanent open space for the road remnant. That's not saying you're guaranteeing it. It's not saying it's going to happen. It's just saying this is the direction that we're going. And I understand that there are some easement issues and you can say subject to those easement issues. So that's point number one. My second point is on the whereas number five. It says, whereas number five is great. It starts off really well, benefits the pond with complimentary habitat. And this is wonderful. And this is clearly within that circle that Nona drew of, of the habitat area that's needed to keep the pond. The frog pond healthy. But then the rest of whereas five talks about the benefits to people. This is also a great, great benefit, obviously, to the other creatures that use the pond, the ecology, et cetera. It's not just the people that are sitting there watching this stuff. And then my final, yes. Question is, well, there are many, many people that have, that care about this. Not all of them are here tonight. We have, we've had a meeting with, you know, Dana, Dana Breen, Helen, a bunch of Judy, a bunch of other people have helped clear the pond. We had some folks from Jasper Ridge look at the the plant life there. I mean, people do care about this and several of us have pledged some funds, some donations for maintenance. So we would like, I would like some guidance. When should we release those friends? Once do we give them? Who do we give them to? What restrictions should we have? Maybe tonight's not the night to find that out. But at some point. You, you must realize that there are these, these town members wanting to help support maintenance of this area. Once it does become open space. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other folks who'd wish to speak?
Betsy Morgan Thaler.
Thank you so much. Yeah, I just wanted to say. In anticipation for the resolution that's on the table right now. Thank you so much, Council Howard. And, and to say that this is the culmination of efforts of so many others. To highlight just a quick few who have really been in the weeds on this. I want to start with the, the sweat equity that Dan just referred to with Dana and the many residents who have turned out to maintain this beloved place. Removing invasives and the very hard work of, of off hauling. And, and all of those who kept them hydrated in the hot spell. And then, as they will get their turn later, to Nona and Judy. Who have done so much to keep this up before us, present and grounded in tremendous depths of research and understanding. So in particular, I want to call out the Jasper Ridge arboreum team who painstakingly came out and for four plus hours catalogued the the spectrum of vascular plants that grow in the area. And then to Nona who researched and provided important learning and education about the outer boundaries and outer stretches of frog pond where, where the siaran chorus frogs live when there's no rain. And so what you're doing today, and I hope it will become known as Frog Pond Trail. I'm not a fan of the road remnant per se. I, I only came to. Acclimate myself to it for, I hope, a short period of time. But it is important, it's important territory to the frog ponds in what seems to be an ever growing off season. So thank you to all for tonight. It's, it's been a while incoming and it's very beautiful and arriving. Thank you.
Thanks, Betsy. Sharon, are there other people who would like to speak?
Nona?
Thank you. Yeah, I'll, I was going to wait like Judy is, but I, then I thought I would just dive in. I, I want to say thank you to everyone, the community, the town council, town manager, town staff. And other committees. First, I want to thank everyone for listening. I and many others thought hard about why the road remnant should be reserved for open space purposes. And I am very grateful that the council now has before it a resolution that achieves what we saw as most critical. Maintaining the road remnant to help protect the frog pond habitat. To protect the frog pond view shed and to protect the trail in the Alpine Road corridor. Second, I want to thank everyone for listening, even when the listening was hard. Sometimes the language seemed overly zealous. Sometimes it seemed overly bureaucratic. When I was Chair of Open Space, I sometimes felt both arguments went too far. But as time went on, it seemed everyone was able to listen beyond the emotion. I hope the spirit of listening will continue because some really hard work lies ahead. First, revising the general plan will entail thinking broadly and deeply about the future of open space in Portola Valley. And what the phrase open space purposes as defined in this resolution really means. This is where the rubber will meet the road for the remnant. Secondly, I hope we all remember that the debate on the road remnant started with a proposal about affordable housing. And I especially want to thank the council for trusting that people were sincere when they said that they were supportive of affordable housing. Just not at the road remnant. Going ahead, we need to be able to answer the question that Mayor Derwin asked. If not the road remnant, then where? To be explicit, I am completely in support of the resolution before you. But if protecting the road remnant ends up taking Portola Valley even further on a path of exclusivity and unaffordability. Then the town will have lost ground, not gained. Thank you, Mayor Derwin and council members for the chance to express my views.
Thank you, Nona. Are there others who would like to speak?
Gary Morgan Thaler.
Hello, members. I, I want to. I, I just want to raise my voice and say thank you for what and what is a, an exceptional effort, I think, by the town manager, Jeremy Dennis, and, and by Howard Young in, in managing this effort through to completion. It's taken a long time. You've listened carefully to the community. This represents, I believe, a very good faith effort on the part of the town council and the part of the town manager and on the part of the public works director. I could not agree more with the comments that have come before. Both Dan's and Nona's so eloquently stated. And I will just say that this, I think, creates a level of communications, open communications, trust and goodwill. Certainly with our community and we really appreciate the listening that's gone on, however difficult at times and as Nona said, however. Perhaps overreaching on maybe overly zealous and overly bureaucratic. Well said, Nona. So anyway, those are my thoughts and thank you again for hearing our community and for acting.
Thank you, Carrie. Sharon, are there others?
There are no other speakers unless Judy, are you gonna?
I think you must wait until after we take a vote, correct?
Yes, thank you.
Right, I'm going to bring it back to the council for comments and the act. We are being asked to approve a resolution designating the portion of the existing town right of way known as the road remnant for open space. Okay, who would like to speak to this? Do you just want to go straight to the motion? No discussion?
I would be ready to make motion.
Okay, I guess we've, we've spent a long time on, a lot of time on this and it's been a very long time coming. So Craig, you have a motion on the floor?
I would move approval of a resolution in our packet.
I will second the motion.
John seconds. Any more discussion? Sharon will call.
Councilmember Alves.
Hi.
Councilmember Wernikoff.
Hi.
Councilmember Richards.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Hughes.
Hi.
Mayor Derwin.
Hi.
So I really appreciate the words I've heard tonight. This was very difficult. So I really appreciate the words I've heard tonight. This was a very difficult project to get through, very difficult for me, as you know. And I'm feeling like we're all in a really good place about it right now. Judy, now you can speak.
Thank you. This is very exciting and Nona was very eloquent about getting to the heart of this in many ways. So I'm not going to be repetitive of that. Mostly, I want to give an enormous thank you to Howard Young and to Jeremy Dennis for their collaborative approach to carrying out the council's directive for the Frog Pond Park Road Remnant. It could have been more ministerial, where interested parties were merely able to kibitz after something was presented. And instead, there was thoughtful, inclusive conversations. And when we had these conversations, they produced this generously sized map. That was all we could have hoped for. It provides the added protection for frog pond habitat that the residents sought and a lovely new park space as well. So it is very much appreciated and the collaboration and cooperation and willingness to sort of stop and think details through was was quite remarkable. So thank you very, very much.
Thank you, Judy. Thanks for all your hard work.
Thank you from the staff to everybody who said kind words. I thank you.
Thank you, Howard. Okay. Moving on to number 10. About the home hardening is actually being continued to an agenda in the future. We don't have the exact date, but probably in the summer.
I would say yeah, very early summer. Just to by way of background. We made the decision last week to pull the item to allow staff to have some additional conversations with our consultant who's been working on this to clarify a few issues that were unfortunately still outstanding at that time. And the delay at this point to move this forward is primarily due to the amount of work that the planning and building department has and bringing forward a variety of very important projects. This isn't meant to pick one over another. We just have other things that are scheduled at this point. So as soon as we have a date, we will announce it. My my guest is not the 26th or the 9th. But a date shortly thereafter to the to the council. So the planning commission would take a look at it before we would bring it to you. So thank you for your patience.
Okay, we look forward to that. Item number 11 is a recommendation by the wildfire prep committee to ban the flammable five. Who is going to handle this?
Like Michael's hand went up immediately. I was gonna start it off.
Mars.
Yeah, let me move you over here, Michael. There you go.
I want to make Jeremy's job a little bit easier tonight. He's been doing talking. So I'm good evening, Mayor Derwin, Town Council and members of the public. Tonight, the wildfire preparedness committee presents yet another recommend nation within our town for much and the Woodside Fire Protection District, the committee unanimously approved a recommendation for town councils considering. The recommendation is an immediate ban.
Michael, we're having a bit of an issue with your connection.
Of what we commonly were subsequent reviews by the town staff and Woodside Fire Protection District. Determined that there's recommendation with the best situated host to the as a fire ordinance. The recommendation for this.
Michael, if you can hear me, I'm going to mute you. Because we're having some trouble with the with the connection here. And I I can continue the the presentation here, Michael. I'm sorry the connection was was poor. So as Michael was discussing, this is one of the six proposals that this council saw late last year that the wildfire preparedness committee was working up. This is a fairly straightforward recommendation from the wildfire preparedness committee, which is to ban new plantings of what they turned to the flammable five. Juniper, cypress, acacia, pine and eucalyptus trees. I think that the staff report is written by the committee does a very good job describing the rationale behind this. So what if the council did choose to move forward on this recommendation, we would work with the appropriate committees and our planning and building department to ensure that any materials provided in the future to those development projects would have this and know that these are trees that we would like to see not planted. In addition, we would be reaching out to homeowners on our own and through the Woodside Fire Protection District on removal as possible over time. I hope I got everything right, Michael. I I love to turn you back on, but I'm afraid the connection was pretty poor. So we'll we'll move forward as is. Thank you.
Okay, council members, do you have questions? Craig.
Um, yes, I have a question just on the sorry, scrolling on the question on the scope or the intensity with which we're going to push people to remove these trees. One. There was some mention in in the packet of, for example, ASCC conditioning project approvals on tree removals or in some cases doing that. Would it be the intention? I mean, there may be properties in town where you know, it's kind of similar to the thing we were talking about last time and it's been coming up with the planning commission around. If you're just upgrading your electric panel and you suddenly face massive costs, then you may not upgrade your electric panel. And similarly, if you have five eucalyptus trees on your five huge eucalyptus trees on your property, that's going to cost a hundred thousand dollars to take out. That may prevent you from otherwise applying for building permit or or maybe doing other safety upgrades on your house because of the increased costs. So do we is is part of what staff will be working on? Figuring out that balance because obviously we want to get all these trees out if we possibly can. I saw there's also some a lot of work. It looks like it's been done by the fire safety committee on fundraising to be able to maybe help pay for some of those kinds of things. And I wonder if those two are are we planning to tie those together in some way? Let me take that backward if I could. And then also Karen Botter is here too. So Karen, if you want to say anything, please raise your hand. She worked very closely on this proposal. The Karen, let me actually, I'll let me unmute you. We'll let you go first here.
Karen.
The initial effort is to ban new plantings. So taking the first step. So that people don't unintentionally plant a pine tree or cypress. We find more common, you know, around a pool area for screening and to start there and to start an awareness program. So that's why we came up with the moniker of five mobile five. So it's sort of more catchy. So we were so people at least have an awareness of what they should get rid of if they can. And then later steps would be to allow the ACC to consider removal of some of these trees. But there isn't this first step is really more the awareness than to not add any more problems and then moving forward to figure out perhaps fundraising and how to get some incentives to remove some particularly the eucalyptus, which are the worst. And does that answer everything?
Okay, other questions up from the council? Okay, Sharon, are there any questions from our community members?
Dan Quinn.
At this time, it's Helen. Confusion totally, two of us on one computer.
You're really messing with us tonight, Helen.
Yes. I'm totally in support of of this idea. I wonder if it's time to go one step further because in the fire department recommendations, there were two further plants, which were the French broom and the coyote brush, which were recommended against. And at least the French broom, which is an aggressive exotic, which the conservation committee has been working hard to try and eliminate along our trails and in our town generally. I think should be added to this list if it's not already forbidden for planting in this town. So my my suggestion, both from a fire safety point of view, but also from a natural environment point of view would be to add that one.
And people have planted French broom in the past on purpose.
That's wild. Jeremy?
Yeah, so the chair, I I did neglect to mention on page 119 of the staff report, the fifth full paragraph. The committee is also recommending the removal of both of those. So that would be part of this package. Thank you, Helen.
The removal, but but the banning of further planting too. It the coyote brush is is more debatable, but the French broom, I think it's clear that we should not allow it to be planted.
Yeah, as they're non-native species, we we I think the committee did a good job in by forgetting a little bit of a difference there, but I think that that is the intention. But if Karen wants to weigh in here, but I would, I mean, I'm certainly comfortable if there was an official ban.
The coyote brush is a native. That's the problem. So.
Thank you.
Karen, did you have any ideas or thoughts on that?
Well, we were focusing more on more common things that people would be planting and there is a lot of education about French broom. The conservation committee does a great job. They have a French broom pole. So it felt that was kind of there was an awareness. You know, flammable five was honestly actually the flammable six. But we're not against it. So it's just sort of where do you cut the line?
Okay.
Mayor Derwin?
Yes.
Judy Murphy would like to speak.
Judy.
Just to the last point that came up, with any sizable project where it comes through conservation, even without a ban, we would pick that up from the planting list and say, oh, no, 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 better not do that. But but of course, that doesn't begin to cover all the small projects that don't come to conservation or people who are just you know, changing out what's in their backyard. So probably we should just start with education around that. I think there's something. I think they chose flammable five on purpose because it's catchy, it's good PR, it's it's marketable, it accomplishes you know, ninety nine percent of what we want to do. So you know, conservation will do what it can about the other plants and these also, obviously. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Any more hands up? Sharon?
No additional hands raised.
All right, back to the council. John Richards.
No, I just have a question probably for Judy or Nona. Is broom even available at local nurseries? Or is that, I don't know, it's even possible to buy it?
Nona?
It is available in in nurseries. Unfortunately.
There's a place we want, maybe want to try education as well.
Yeah, and there is, I know of students who have tried to do that kind of outreach and get the word out to the nurseries, but it's a it's a hard one.
Yeah, okay. Thanks, Nona.
Jeff, do you have your hand up?
I did. I just, I want to thank the the wildfire committee for their work on this, one of several initiatives they've pushed forward. I'm I'm in support of this. I would be fine with with adding some language around those, the coyote brush and the French broom. I I I see the point that they're not necessarily as much of a concern for new plantings, but I don't mind being explicit about that either. I kind of like the flammable five too. So maybe we just added as language that they're just good, but they're of course not. They're both both their removal and their non-inclusion in plans be 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 encouraged. But I would be ready to move forward. In fact, I'll I will. Well, I want to hear from everyone else and then I'll make a motion on this if anyone wanted to change it around those two plants in question.
Craig.
I I think we can probably call it the flammable five and then, you know, put the two others in the list at the bottom with an asterisk or something. So I I think encouraging removal of all of them is clearly. Yeah, I do like the catchy name also. Incendiary six, I don't know. Or the heptad, if you know.
I agree with everything that's been said. I don't have anything to add.
Okay, so what I'm hearing is we like the phrase flammable five, but we would like to include coyote brush and especially Scotch broom somewhere on a list with a little asterisk. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes.
Okay, and who would like to make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
All right, second.
Second.
Craig, discussion? Sharon, roll call.
Councilmember Alf.
Hi.
Councilmember Wernikoff.
Hi.
Councilmember Richards.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Hughes.
Hi.
Mayor Derwin.
Hi. Okay, thanks for your great work as usual, Karen and Michael, if you're still out there somewhere. I'm sorry that Michael's technology failed him tonight. Okay, item number 12. This is a recommendation by the assistant to the town manager about our website update. Randy.
Evening, everyone. I'm going to turn it over to Carrie to start off unless Jeremy has any words he would like to say and then I'll loop back in at the end.
Nothing at the time, please, Carrie.
All right. Okay, so I'm Carrie and Brandy and I are going to share today what we've done so far to prepare for our new website and the steps that we're going to take to get to the launch and what we're going to do after the launch. So a lot of people probably are asking us, you know, why are we going ahead and doing a whole new website? But anyone who's been to it recently, you can see that our website is mired and is still living in 2013. And so, you know, it's a new time, a lot of new technology, a lot of new looks that we are looking to upgrade our website to. Our current, our website frame, it doesn't really allow for easy navigation for our residents. It makes them difficult to access information. And for staff, we have a hard time being able to create sort of a dynamic seating front page to help our residents find the information that they need. I mean, it's really been for the last eight years, a one-way informational tool. And as we move forward with it, there are, we're seeing a trend for more people who are accessing our website on our on their mobile phones and on tablets. And our current website frame isn't very mobile friendly. And so one of the big changes will be to update that. So when we started this project about a year ago, we really were trying to think about what we wanted our website to look like, to feel like and how it can meet the needs of the community. And so we have, we met with all the department heads, we met with Jeremy to review and to really understand what the needs are for the departments, you know, what what we could do to to help them do their job better and provide the information that they want to get out there to the community. We also worked with the staff. We talked about what they needed to do their job better. But also to better understand what community members are looking for from them and how we can provide that on the website. And we also looked at the data. So we looked at the data of what we were seeing people actually doing on our website to better understand how we could make the process better for everyone. So we started by looking at how people were accessing our website and we we looked at the data last year and we realized that in 2020, it's a very different, it was a very different way that people were accessing our website than they did in previous years because of the pandemic. So as you can see during 2020, ninety two point eight percent of people were actually accessing the website by their desktop. But if you compare to that to the previous year in 2019, there was a higher percentage of people who are accessing through mobile and tablets. And as we move into 21 and 22, we're going to see an increase of mobile and tablet users as that is a common trend that's happening across government websites. We also looked at the pages that people are most commonly going to. And as you can see in 2020, the most interesting people, information that people were looking for was about COVID-19. And they were looking at the planning and building department and they were looking at trails, ways to get out into our community. And if you compare that to 2019, where people are looking at taking classes and they were the calendars and going into town center. So it was a little different of interest. And so the key thing we're seeing here is depending on the year or the month or what's going on, people are looking for different information. And so being able to, as we move forward, present the relevant information for the time of year is going to be helping our residents find what they need quickly.
So with, with the website update, we had an over, a couple of overarching goals. First, we wanted to make the information as accessible as possible for those who utilize the website and free up staff time for those who need additional assistance. And we have sort of two sets of users that come to the website. For the return user, we wanted to make the documents easy to find. And for the new user, we wanted to make it more explicit on where to start to get the information they needed. And our second overarching goal was to organize the website so that evergreen content is separate from dynamic content, so that the dynamic content is easier to main and stays fresh. So in service of these goals, we're making the website more user-friendly. We're preparing to integrate online services that we are implementing through our new Open Gov software. And we're reorganizing the content to make it more accessible. So the, as Carrie mentioned, we met with each department head and the town manager to review and understand their needs. We also met multiple times with the building and planning department to revamp the building and planning sections. We interviewed town staff and reviewed the page visit data to determine the information most needed. What are people calling the town for? Why are they coming to the front desk and visiting the website? What are they complaining about not being able to do on the website or information that's hard to find? With this information, we reimagined the navigation bars. We reorganized and streamlined content to eliminate what I call brain freeze when you see a list this long of items you could click on. And then to make, to make it an easy transfer of content, we've been reorganizing our current content on the current website so that we, we were able to kind of see where everything could be on the new website. So with that in mind, we've developed a new departments tab. We'll replace the building and planning tab with a business tab because although we don't have very many businesses in town where we engage with a lot of external businesses. And then we made an I want to tab, which will provide the most commonly sought-after information in a very easily accessible place. So with that, in addition to meeting with staff, we also worked with the town council subcommittee over the last year to select the template colors and fonts for the new website, as well as evaluate and organize the website map. This is a screenshot of the new website design. As you can see, it's brighter and crisper than the old website with less visual color. The components are also more malleable than the old website in that we can change the tabs at the top, the buttons, and the main content section you see there that currently says volunteers in action to, to emphasize specific content. So with these malleable components, we have the ability to create a more dynamic homepage. We can also better support the online solutions that I mentioned we're implementing through Open Gov, so they will be easier to find and showcase. We've also are anticipating that we'll have enhanced engagement because we can showcase important issues, events, and opportunities for residents to give feedback. So for our remaining timeline for the website update, on May 10th, the, the current website was backed up and we're currently transferring content to the new template. And then from May 10th to June 1st, we'll be checking content and fix, fixing the organization of the menus. We'll be doing some additional training with staff on the backend of the website and we'll decide what to emphasize on the homepage. Then on June 1st, the wireframe will switch to the live site. And from June 1st to June 13th, we're going to ensure everything's working. We plan on engaging a small focus group to test the site. And this focus group will be comprised of a few committee members, a few community members, staff members, and hopefully a member of the business community. From June 14th to June 18th, we're going to make any changes identified from the focus group and staff. And then June 21st is our tentative official public launch of the new website. And we do have some additional content that we're working on creating and updating. For example, we're working on the emergency preparedness section. We're cleaning up the sustainability section of the website and we're creating a couple of additional departments under the departments tab. So after the upgrade is complete, we're going to create a schedule for reviewing pages so the content doesn't get stale. We also, in our, our contract, we have some additional tools available to us that we'll be utilizing. For example, we will have a semi-annual health check of the website, a semi-annual site analytics report, and we're hoping to do that. We're planning to do that site analytics before and after, so we see what the differences between the old and new website. And then we will also be doing a graphics audit. In addition to these services provided by Granicus, we are also working with a company called Siteimprove to ensure that accessibility requirements are met on the new website. So once the website is launched, we'll, we're planning to come back to the council and give you an additional presentation and review all of the new features and help you locate the new content. So with that, we are open to any questions.
Great, Brandy, thanks. Colleagues' questions? Craig?
Yeah, thanks for all your work on this. I've been on the subcommittee, so I've been kept up to date as you guys have been moving forward. And it's good to see that we're right on the verge of actually launching this finally after all that work. So it sounds like then June, June 1st, if you go to portolavalley.net, you will see the new site. That's, that's what that meant in the slide there. And then there may be some wrinkles that we're ironing out over the following weeks. But from June 1st, from the public's point of view, if they go to the website, they'll see the new thing.
Correct. And I mean, one of our goals with updating the content on the current website was to have as little transition time as possible needed to, you know, make it more user-friendly.
And then my other question was one that came up at a committee meeting. I guess it was the open space acquisition committee. Our committees often produce flyers and other content that we've historically put on our website. And the open space committees in the midst of doing a fairly major project they've been working on with a flyer and encouraging people to donate to the open space fund, things like that. And part of what they wanted to do is make things a little more, more graphical and aesthetically nicer. So for, for them and for other committee members, once we launch the new site, are there any differences in terms of how the committees should interact with you guys in terms of getting you new content when they want to refresh something or update something? So not, not stuff that the staff is producing, which you guys have already covered, but where the content is coming from committees or other community members?
Now, the process will be the same. And so anytime a committee member wants to do a particular project or wants to change their page, wants a new page, they can come to me.
Okay, thanks. I don't, I don't know if they've reached out yet, but they probably will.
And we can do some engagement with the committees. We're actually undertaking another project which will make it more eas, which will make it easier for us to communicate with all the committee chairs. But if you go to, we, we have done that with lots of the committees. So conservation has done a lot of projects. We have the information on the website. The sustainability committee has a climate change reading list that's on the website. So that's something that we have done a lot.
Thanks.
Anyone else?
Um.
Sarah?
I just wanted to say thank you and I'm definitely excited about this and looking forward to it. And I, I really do think it's, it's a tremendous opportunity, you know, for the town to have information that's easily digestible out there for the community, you know, to learn about particularly in hot topics like wildfire and housing and things like that, where sometimes misinformation gets out there. It's going to be fantastic to have, you know, a more flexible website where we can have that information in a, in a, in a more concise way versus trying to find things in all the, the nooks and crannies where the information is currently. So just want to say thank you and I think it's going to be a good resource for the community.
Thanks, Sarah. Sharon, are there any members of the community who wish to speak?
There are no hands raised at this time.
Alrighty. So is there any action that we need to take on this, Jeremy or Randy?
No, no, no action tonight. We just wanted to give you the update and it provides also an opportunity for the community to become as excited as we are about getting this, this portion of the project completed and, you know, really initiating some of the things that I think we've been talking about for a little while now. So just an update.
Thanks for that update. Jeff?
Thank you both.
Sorry, I was going to wait till after public comment, but there is none. I was just going to thank everyone's staff and Sarah and Craig for moving this forward. I, I think this is, you know, I'm looking forward to seeing this website revamped. I think we all agree that it's needed to be, needed to be updated. So thank you. I'm excited about this too.
I enjoyed the photo that depicted 2013 with Kate holding the baby. Very good.
It completely fooled me when they showed this earlier this week to me. I, I utterly missed the joke. I, I said, is this a rebirth of our website? And they both laughed at me and said, boy, you don't know what you're talking about, Jeremy.
Yeah, Jeremy. All right, item number 13 is a discussion. And this will take council action, planning and building department staffing. Jeremy, are you going to handle this?
I'll just, just briefly say that, you know, joined tonight by Laura Russell, the planning and building director, you know, when Laura started just a few years ago, I don't think she or any of us anticipated that there'd be the kinds of changes that we'd be considering as it relates to the planning and building department, given everything that's happening around us. So I just, you know, in advance, wanted to thank her for, I think, some extremely good work as it relates to the staff report and everything else that she does. So I'll turn it over to Laura.
Laura, another stellar staff report, really, really.
I appreciate it. We really have a lot of really important topics in front of us. So trying to deliver to the best information that I can. So in case there's anyone out there that doesn't know, I'm Laura Russell and the planning and building director. So let me share my screen and get my presentation going. In my, every time I do this, my view is a little bit different. I don't know why Zoom does that, but. Okay, that should do it. So we're going to talk about the staffing in the department, a little bit of background perspective, where we're at now and how we'd like to move forward. So first, I think it's useful to think about fiscal year 1819 as a good reference point. This is obviously before the pandemic started, but still sort of a recent year. And so at that time, our staffing pattern was full for full-time staff. So myself, a planner, and two technicians. And we had two part-time contract staff, a planner and a building inspector, who was also a building official. And at that time, I would describe it as a busy but manageable workload. We had little time for special projects or kind of administrative work, but we were able to keep things moving. Sorry, just a second. Okay. In fiscal year 1920, the council authorized a second full-time planner position. But then about that same time, our associate planner moved on from the town. And so we went out for a recruitment and it was successful to hire an assistant planner, but it was not successful to hire a higher level, either associate or senior planner. So then the pandemic started and we weren't sure about much, much of anything at that time. So the council made the decision to defund that associate or senior planner position due to the uncertainty that we were under. And so we've been using consultant planners to provide services during that time. So for building official services, we had a previous inspector who was also a certified building official. And she left the area right about the start of the pandemic. So I've been doing the majority of the building official work since that time. And then I've been using consultant services to assist me with code interpretations and context in decision-making. Then on code compliance, the activity we've been able to do has been very limited because of our other workload. So our technician is able to do a very small amount of follow-up on code enforcement complaints, but we've really only been able to address the more serious health and safety issues that have come to us. And just as a reminder, our traditional approach to code enforcement is a very light touch. The town has preferred neighbor-to-neighbor communications. And we really emphasize reaching out to people, sharing best practices and what they should do. And it's very rare that we use a notice of violation or other more serious enforcement action. So our work program has really been evolving in, in many ways over the last couple of years. It's become more complex and we have many more demands for customer service. We're working on significant development applications, more so than the town has seen in a long time or ever, depending on how you look at it or who you ask. And with that has come increased community engagement and need for communications. And also with that has come, I think there is a connection to the Public Records Act request that we're receiving. We used to get these maybe only a couple per year total. And now we get them on a regular basis and it's a part of our regular work program. We're also dealing with more complex state laws, as you know, and applicants are really requesting a very high level of service from us. And then we put the pandemic on top of that. And so our previous systems were all in person and on paper. And we had dreams of going to an electronic or, we didn't even think about virtual. We just thought about electronic systems at that time. And I thought, oh, maybe we'll do that in the next three years. Well, we ended up doing that in more like three months. So we closed down all of our permit activity and focused just on emergency permits at first. And then we gradually developed new procedures and added new technologies so that we could get back to full services. So we were to almost completely full services by July of 2020 and a couple of things followed soon thereafter. And we've really learned a lot during that process. We've learned that we can provide services remotely. And we have also learned that many of those things are slower than our old systems were. And it has a lot to do with the kind of, all the number of contacts that we have to have with people, the volume of communications and emails and moving things around. So what we want to do moving forward is to take the best of the pre-pandemic things that we used to do and everything we've learned and kind of rework some of our procedures and become as efficient as we can through all those lessons. We've also really experienced that the needs of our residents have changed. I think, my opinion is that it's the pressure of the outside world and what everyone has been dealing with. And applicants have been interacting with staff differently. Some of them just need reassurance. You all know that we have a technician that a lot of people in the community know. And so sometimes people seem to call Cheyenne just because they need some reassurance, that everything's going to be okay. We're also dealing with people that are more impatient and even angry than we've ever had to deal with before. And that's really taking a toll on staff. And we recognize that customer service is our most important thing. It's our core mission. But when we put all these things together, it has resulted in strained resources. So I want to talk a little bit about the volume of the work. So there's a number of different tables that are in the staff report. And I just wanted to highlight a couple of the, the key things that I think are, are important. And so the first one is in circled and red there, from April to June of 2020, when the pandemic had just hurt, hit and we were mostly closed. We were still able to issue or receive applications for 62 building permits. And so this is really an important accomplishment for us to demonstrate to the community that we were. And so this is really an important accomplishment for us to demonstrate to the community that we were still providing services. And we were still there to help people with the things that they most needed. Some of these were emergency permits to people who were really under a lot of stress at the beginning of the pandemic. And then the next thing I'd like to highlight is the next quarter after that, from July to September of 2020. We received 116 building permit applications. This is a really high number for us and a really high number, especially considering we were using brand-new permitting procedures. That we were still testing out. And so if you look at that quarter of 116 building permit applications and compare it to a reference here. Fiscal year 1819, that's a 28% increase over that reference year before the pandemic. So really significant. And if that trend continues, which I suspect it will or close to it, we're looking at something like 448 permits by the end of the year. And that's a 20% increase over the reference year of 2018 to 2019. Here's two areas of work you probably don't think too much about unless you're the resident that's actually applying for these things. But these are two things that our technicians do for us, tree removal permits and residential data reports. Both of these have had a significant amount of growth. Also during the same time period. We have, if the trends continue with 38% increase in tree removal permits over the reference year. And residential data reports even higher. These are linked to residential market activity. And so we're really busy in this area with a 53% increase over 2018, 2019 already. And then code enforcement complaints, these are the last three years and you can see it's a really big number for this most recent year. We've experienced a spike that we think was related to the leaf blower ordinance going into effect. And also, I think because people have been home, they have been noticing things in their community and people are a little bit on edge. And I think that that has contributed to the number of code enforcement complaints that we've received. And there are, some of my colleagues have reported the same thing, an increase in code enforcement complaints during the pandemic time. So it's hard to know if these trends are going to continue, right? Because we don't know how much they're related to the pandemic. But it is still a significant increase for us. So depending on what assumptions you make about how this may continue through the remainder of the fiscal year. I think there's, you know, 37 to 48% increase over the, over the reference year of 2018 to 2019, so quite a bit. In regards to planning applications, this data is not quite as easy to extract for us based on the way our software works. But what we do have here for you is the fiscal year 1920, number of permit applications that we received and the different categories. With a total of 34. And then in this fiscal year, we're already at 52 applications. And so that's a 35% increase. We don't have the exact data to compare to in the reference year of 1819, like we have for the building permit data. But we do have the information for calendar year 2019. So that's a reasonable approximation. I'm not exactly the same. But it's, it's a 27% increase over that year. We are also working on really significant development projects right now. And just so that the council and the public are aware, that includes, you know, Stanford faculty housing. But also includes the Neely Winery Conditional Use Permit. The Alpine Hills is in for an amendment to their conditional use permit. Priory School is in for an amendment to their conditional use permit. And Alpine Inn Rosati's is expected to come in for an application as well. And then the housing element update, which we talked about in depth at the last meeting. And then getting ready to start work on the safety element update as well. So we do have a backlog of applications in the planning side. We've kept up pretty well in the building side. But we are really strained to do that at this time. So the backlog is bigger in planning and a little bit in building and a little bit in the areas of. Just trying to keep the house clean, you know, trying to do all the everyday things that are hard to get to. So what we have right now, we're the same full-time staff, myself, planner and two technicians. And then for, we have part-time contract staff. We have six people now reporting into me. So I have four planners at varying levels, principal planner, senior planner. And assistant planner that are assigned to different projects according to their levels. We have the contract building inspector. We've brought on a contract code compliance officer to help us with the code compliance backlog. And then I recently brought in a building official to assist me with those high-level and complex building-related issues. So the proposed approach going forward. The immediate item that we'd like the council to give us direction on tonight. Is to fill the senior planner position right away. And this is really important for the housing element update process and for the other council priorities. So that would be the majority of what that person is working on would be those priorities. We expect that probably about 85% of this person would go towards that type of work, which is paid for by the general fund. And about 15% of their work would probably be reimbursable for development applications that they're working on. So relatively small percentage. The expected salary is $115,000 to $130,000 plus benefits. Next in our proposed approach is to retain the contract planner services. So all of these services are as needed. There's no commitment on these types of services. I would like to have the planners that we have working for us now continue on their projects. And so we would have continuity on the projects to the degree that is possible. And then if we get other large projects and we would have planners at different levels to be able to assign those projects to. The majority of that work would be reimbursable through applicant deposits. And we would like to have some money available for general customer service and for special projects. So when we're helping people at the beginning of their project, we're not getting application fees or reimbursed for that time yet. It's a really important part of the services that we provide. And so our one full-time planner is not going to be able to handle all that customer service themselves. So we will, I think, need a contract planner to help with the customer service. And then the special projects, maybe some of the other council priorities that have come up, that may be things like. Updating the design guidelines for the fire safety recommendations. You know, the trees that you were talking about this evening, those are the types of things that we need to have a little bit of available funds to be able to staff those. Next is to retain code compliance services. So again, as needed, no commitment. I think about three to four hours of work per week is probably going to be sufficient once we catch up a little bit. To have a reasonable response if we receive complaints and be able to close out cases. Another good thing about having a code compliance officer that is really experienced is that they're going to keep really good records. So we've already started to make sure that we're tracking all of our complaints. We have clear follow-up on what's been followed up on. And if the cases have been closed, we'll know that moving forward. And that will help the council. I know you've considered different options about what we might want to do for code compliance. This will give us more data and information to help in decision-making. And our plan, unless the council would like us to do something different, is to really maintain our current approach, which is about communication. And voluntary compliance. So we still would not be issuing violations just because we have a contract code compliance officer. We don't. We don't want to do it any differently unless you would like us to. It would just mean we'd be able to follow up and really do those communications and bring things to resolution. So this would be a general fund expense and we think about $23,000 would be an appropriate budget for that. Next is to retain building official services. Again, as needed services. And again, I think about three to four hours of work per week would be probably what we need. And this person would be advisory to me and in support of staff. And dealing with complex issues, being able to go out into the field and look at things and help with problem solving. The person that we have retained is a very experienced building official that was previously at Menlo Park. And worked with Cara there and came to us very well recommended by a very good colleague of mine. And so I think that he in this position will really be kind of a face. Of the building division in a way we haven't had. Since we had our own full-time building inspector. So I think that this will help even those few hours per week. On some of the more challenging projects that we're dealing with. And this would also be a general fund expense and we're proposing $25,000 for this. So in terms of next steps, it's, it's hard for us to tell right now. Where all of this increased workload is coming from, right? We know some of it is a natural increase that's happening. You know, when housing stock is aging, you're going to have an increase in the number of everyday permits. We're going to continue to have. Demo and rebuild of new houses because some of our aging housing stock. Some of it is related to the pandemic. We don't know exactly how that's going to resolve. Some of that is related to the market activity that seems to be coming with this unusual economy that we're in with the pandemic and the very hot real estate market. And then some of it is probably related to the number of development applications that we have right now. And we don't know if that's going to continue. Or if that's going to settle down when a few housing projects start to come forward after the housing element update, what's going to happen? We don't know yet, right? It depends on the outcome of all this work that we're doing. So we do recognize we're going to need to check in with you probably more regularly on the planning and building department staffing. So we suspect we'll be back to you maybe in the middle of this fiscal year to check in and see how things are going. And then maybe periodically after that so that we can really monitor this and keep up the customer service levels. So for tonight, staff is seeking direction on two things. The first is the recruitment of a senior planner. So we would like to immediately recruit upon council approval. And I mean immediately, like I'll start working on it tomorrow if you say that that's what you would like me to do. Because it's going to be really important to try to get a person in place as soon as we can for the work that we have. And then we'd like feedback and direction on the remainder of the plan. So that we can take that information and implement it into the budget process that we're working on and bringing forward in June. So that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions and looking forward to your comments.
Okay, great work, Laura, as usual. Questions from council? Craig?
Yeah, thanks Laura. I think the presentation in the packet were very helpful in digesting all of this. I think there's, there's a lot of changes, you know, in the short term. And then I'm sure there'll, as you say, be more. As we, as we keep moving forward and we come out of the pandemic, we move into the new housing element cycle. I had two questions. The first one is just a technical question. Is the, the senior planner, I know we had budgeted it previously. Is it currently in the budget or as well as telling you to start recruiting? Do we need before we actually hire the person to a budget amendment on that or what, what technically is needed in order to make that actually happen?
I can take that question. So it was, the, the position was not deleted, but the funding was eliminated in the, in this fiscal year. There's no budget action required tonight because of the timing of the position. And it's higher, if everything goes well, we're anticipating a person to come on board, you know, very quickly in the new fiscal year. So there's no actual.
So they wouldn't be starting till July anyway, so it doesn't matter. No. Okay. And then the other question was on the building official contractor. That you were, you had on there about two slides back. You said that would be a general fund cost, but aren't those all project-related expenses or is that not? Billable through to applicants or to whatever project he's going and officiating?
There would be some cases where there may be a separate deposit account on what he would be working on. But more likely, it would be covered with your general building permit application and inspection fees. And so, so there would be some, so it is a general fund, mostly a general fund expenditure. The way that our fees are set up in the building department is different than in planning where we have deposits for almost everything that we do.
Okay, but we, but i- if there's more work for that person to do, we would be getting more revenue to offset it. So even if it's flowing through the general fund. It shouldn't really be a net cost.
The way that I think about it is that we probably would not be taking in more applications because of this person. So they would not really be generating revenue. They would be assisting us in managing the projects that we would already be taking in. And the revenue associated with that.
Next time we do a fee update, we'd be able to say, oh, well, it's costing us more to provide the service and raise the fees.
Yes, exactly.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Okay, Sharon, are there any questions from our community members?
There are no hands raised.
Alright, then I will bring it back to the council and what we are being asked to do is to provide direction on number one. Whether to fill the senior planning position immediately. And number two, direction on retaining the contract planner services, code compliance services, building official services. For 30,000, 23,000 and 25,000. So. Craig, how do you feel about this?
Yes and yes.
Hey, yes and yes. That's quick. Jeff?
Yeah, I agree. I, I, you know, I see how hard these guys have been working to keep up with everything that's going on. And I think they, I think they do need. I've been, I've been saying, Jeremy, for quite a while that we probably do need more help in this area. So yeah, I think this is the right move.
John?
I agree and I'll make a motion if we need.
Sarah?
I agree. The report was really thorough and it's kind of comes off that this is a no-brainer and a very important need for you guys. So. Yes and yes.
And I concur. And one question for Jeremy, there's no way we can use any of our special money for this, is there?
I do not see a path necessarily on this, but we will explore it. It hasn't been part of the core conversations we've had around the use of COVID-19 funds. I would be reluctant to use one-time funds for permanent positions, obviously. So we want to be careful there. But we'll take a look.
Alright, John, did you want to make a motion?
I will move that we, that we authorize staff to initiate a recruitment for the senior planet position immediately. And I guess that's probably the only part that needs to be moved, needs a motion. Is that right?
Is it Cara?
We should have direction on the, on the other piece of it as well.
I will move that we approve the retention of contract planning services as. As laid out and the including code compliance and building official services.
To clarify, I think you're, you're, you're saying that staff should put that in the budget for next year, John, rather than.
That's right.
I second that motion then.
Any further discussion? Sharon?
Councilmember Alf?
Hi.
Let's remember Wernicke.
Hi.
Councilmember Richards?
Hi.
Mayor Hughes?
Hi.
Mayor Derwin?
Hi.
Mayor Derwin may make just a quick comment before Laura goes. I. We really appreciate the opportunity to, to have this conversation with you, not other than the obvious reasons, which is to get direction related to the budget and moving forward. But to convey to you how challenging the last year has been for all of our departments. And tonight was the planning and building department. The, the staff is extraordinary. And very talented. And as a reminder, you know, half of the staff has been here a very long time. They're, basically their careers have been with Portola Valley. We asked them in the space of a couple of months to completely transform the way that they had been doing business in some cases for 20 years. And they did an incredible job of that. We are as frustrated as everyone else is who has seen delays in the department. That is, that was expected on some level, given what was occurring. We, I should also remind folks that for six weeks, we had no planning director because of issues. In the summer. So we're, you know, working very hard to complete the tasks that we know we can do as quickly as possible. But we really do thank you for hearing that part of the story tonight. It's important for us to share that. As Laura is fond of saying to me, but we're people. And we're not faceless. And we're not faceless bureaucrats. We work very hard. We don't mean to sound bureaucratic when we do. We're just trying to. Follow the rules as best as we can. So the planning and building staff is full of people who are working very hard for this community. So Laura, thank you for your presentation tonight.
We acknowledge that. We get it. Thank you. Thank you, Laura. Thank you, Sharon. Thank you, Jeremy.
On, on behalf of my staff too, thank you very much. The support means a lot to us.
I just want to say that last year in sort of the depths of despair as I was hearing from Jeremy and Laura, and. I was also hearing from a lot of constituents at that time, and I can tell you they, they handled the, the. The diligence and the patience they showed in overcoming all of those obstacles was truly admirable. So thank you.
Yep.
Thanks. Good night.
Good night. Okay, 14, our council liaison committee reports. Who would like to go first?
I can go first. Go ahead, John.
I'll go ahead. So I had a heart Mac meeting.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Yeah, this was.
Yes.
To Dawn Horstley ran the meeting, introduced everyone. Armando Sanchez and Mahin Sifia Body were there. Running the, most of the meeting was, had to do with. Updating the progress on the various programs such as loans to housing developers, loans to. The first time home buyers program in the county and there's Quick Start Program. These are all mostly programs that loan money to. People who are really stretched in, in buying or finding a place to live. And they had some really great success with it. They put in, I think, 16, 16 projects. Were completed last year. And let me see, I'm going to get the numbers wrong here, but. Overall, they're, they have enough. Programming ability and ability and energy to do a lot more as they had the funds. So they're looking for ways to create more opportunities to, to. Run these programs and with the possibility of issuing revenue bonds to get the private sector funding. Running into this, this whole operation. Anyway, it's, it's a really fabulous set of programs and they're, they're doing wonderful work. But they do need more help. And I think we'll be seeing. Some more, more results of that as the year goes by and they're, they're. Exploring new options, opportunities. We also went through the Gladder Program, which is the. The ADU program that the county that they put together last year that I assisted on a bit. Putting out four designs for. It uses that you can, they're free to be for the user and will be pre-approved by several cities in the county. We started out with, I think, five cities, River City, East Palo Alto, Belmont. One or just four cities. And. There will be. There's a website you can go to. On the hearts of, heart of SMC.org. Where you can look at the designs and, and see what's available. Actually, you can download the designs and. And. And if you're in one of the cities that has them pre-approved, be able to get them theoretically, get them through. Into the, into the construction process really quickly. So that's an encouraging step in the right direction. And then I had the emergency preparedness meeting. Last week. Let's see, on the sixth. This, and we had the share, representative from the show's department. The chief, Linda was there talking about, among other things, pre-planning for potential evacuations from the town. And so that's an ongoing effort. And there's. It's actually a pretty quick meeting. Updates on WPV ready. The. Program that, that. Local people in town can take, take advantage of and participate in. June 26, there's going to be a field day. This is when the ham radio operators all get together and. Get out on, they usually do it on our soccer field or at the town center. Hopefully we'll be able to do that by the time June 26 rolls around and kind of looking like we may. And then let's see, nine 11 talked about an exercise coming up with WPV cert. Regionwide exercise. Then let's see, had the open space committee meeting that was well attended. Craig and Jeremy were both there. We had some potential new members attend. And the primary discussion was had to do with. It's the possible. Description of the. Open space describing why, why open spaces, what types of open space. Was sort of like. The. Reason that the open spaces are will be, will be, we have, why we have them, what, what their purposes are and what kind of. What kind of service they want, should provide to the town. Top priorities for now include the Denver property and Shady Trail. Which. Are kind of a little bit off the track for most people that even know the Denver property there, I believe. Let's see. And. Think that was more or less it. Craig, Craig presented his proposal for development, developing. Parameters for open space easements is a possibility for using the open space funding. Which they thought was a great idea. So that was all I had.
Nope.
No, it was right when we had attended the.
All of cities.
And yes.
And it was.
Woodside, Council Cities.
Yeah.
And it's.
Anna Schu.
Anna Schu, yes, thank you, Mary Ann. I'm listening here. Yeah. So she gave an update from Washington primarily. Very informative. She's always a big head.
She is.
That's all I had, I think, was there more?
No, that's the only one I have for you on the list, but I also have Sarah for one, Jeff and Craig. So I'll make, I'll see if you remember them. Let's see, Jeff.
I was on a call with Mary Ann and Jeremy with the insurance commissioner, Commissioner Laura. I thought it was actually very useful, interesting discussion. It was, it was the three of us and then the, our counterparts from the town of Woodside, the town of Hillsborough. You know, Commissioner Laura was very, I thought he was very receptive to what we were, we were basically concerned about insurance cancellations. I sort of, I, I, I kind of took a stab at the elephant in the room and talked about. Being asked to provide housing that we might not be able to get insured. And I was, I haven't really talked to you guys about it. I was quite pleased by his surprise. I, I was cooked, pleased by his response. I felt like he actually. Took that question well, and it was clearly something was on his mind as well. So I feel like he's. He's, you know, he's addressing that as one other angle in terms of, you know, just as we look at our housing questions. It sounds like he's actually taking that particular angle seriously, along with just. Getting, getting, you know, getting the insurance for the houses we already have. So I thought it was actually a good meeting. I had Parks and Rec last week. The town, the Zasta, the Zasta Tots picnic and concert are now happening on October 2nd. Maybe we already, sorry, maybe we've already had announced that, but that was something that came up in our meeting. What's that?
Not the ninth.
Don't quote me on that. I, I thought it was.
Still the same as the, as the revive, that the last I had heard from the CAC, they were doing it all together on the same day.
Is it the ninth or the second? I think.
It was the ninth.
It's the ninth. You're right. I'm sorry. It was, yeah, we had, we were talking about September and then it got moved to the second weekend in October. Sorry, the ninth. Parks and Rec also discussed the dog park again, had one comment, public comment. Pointing out that the day of the horse is usually held out in that space they're considering for the dog park, which. I certainly want to be accommodating to the horse community. That said, it sort of feels like there's some compromise. I mean, it just feels sort of. Feel extreme to sort of take this very popular item off the table for something that's going to happen one day a year, but. I do want to, I want to sort of, there'll be a lot more discussion of it. We've got several months before it probably becomes anything more than, more than a just a discussion. So. I think it's just moving forward. I'll be it slowly. Those were the, those are the main things I had.
Sarah? Is mute.
Sorry, um, my, my only meeting was the ASCC meeting and there was one primary agenda for that, and that was the review of the addition at Station Eight. And there were no, it was really just a review, update and review meeting. For. Neighbors to, and the conservation committee to. Share their thoughts about the parking in particular.
And they kept it in front?
It was just a review of the plans. There were no. There was no action at the end.
Okay, but we also had the three of us, you, me and Jeremy had a little chit chat about. Business. Does. Remember?
Oh, the update about. Use of funds for the business community.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Our first thoughts about.
Yeah, well, I think my understanding from that conversation is we were going to wait for a little bit more guidance from. I don't know what, Jeremy, whatever entity that is that was providing the guidance for the COVID relief funds. But once we have that, that we would. You know. Want to figure out a way to make certain funds available to local businesses.
Yep.
But I don't think we know enough about. That to talk more in detail at this point, that's my understanding.
Yeah, it was just released 151 pages of it. Cara and I are reviewing it. So it's. It's actually. I think our initial read is that it, it does provide a lot of potential opportunities for the use of funds, including the business community. So we'll have more to report to the, to both of you on that.
Okay, Craig?
Yeah, I have a number. Let's see. I think these are roughly chronological BPTS on Wednesday, the fifth. A report from the sheriff's department, they actually wrote 125 parking citations, not moving violations, but parking citations in the month of March. Most of those are around enforcement around Windy Hill and across the street from Windy Hill there. And then they, they wrote a bunch more in April, but the final numbers haven't percolated through there yet. They're, they're actually enforcing parking there, not just, you know, for egregious violations, not just sticking a little thing under the windscreen says, please don't do it again. They're actually writing tickets now. There was discussion about the continuing issues with parking there. The BPTS formed a subcommittee to look at maybe changing some of the signage there and no parking signs and so on. To improve compliance. Let's see what else was on the list there. May 22nd, there's a bike to anywhere day. They're going to have an Energizer station set up at Triangle Park for. Bikes going by with two naps and helmet fitting and Energizer station. See, the next one, finance committee that evening on Wednesday, the fifth. Welcome to the new member, Steven Fasini that we appointed recently. Updates the finance committee on the status of the open gov project, which is moving along well. And the committee discussed shifting to a quarterly meeting schedule. So getting quarterly reports, once we have open gov able, able to produce those for us. And meeting at least once a quarter, not just to review those reports, but to review those reports and also discuss anything else that comes up in the, in the interim. Plus one or two additional meetings per year, which I think the committee will be sort of thinking through whether it's one or two for budget and audit. See, open spaces, John said, mentioned in our website update that the committee is revamping, well. They, they put together a very nice brochure, which is sort of a. PF or paper type brochure. And they're going to be working on taking the information from that, plus some extra and updating the open space content on the website as well with staff. And then planning commission. The main, the main stuff they were talking there was an update from staff on the housing element. Process and timeline and what's coming ahead. And there was also discussion of the fire safety stuff and. The process for reviewing undergrounding of utility applications when you upgrade your panel and. What sorts of things staff should communicate to applicants around. When they might expect that the, that the commission would be more likely or less likely to grant exceptions. And so staff was just looking for some guidance from the planning commission on. How to talk to applicants essentially about whether or not and what they should. What they should consider when thinking about asking for exceptions. Mary Ann, I guess you have something that I.
Our meeting with the committee chairs?
Our meeting with committee chairs. Oh, yeah. We met with committee chairs, went, went fairly well. It's mostly just us updating them on what's going on and what's coming up in town. I don't have my notes thrown in front of me, so you can tell me if there was anything important that happened there that.
And through the chair, I think was just primarily an opportunity for updates. It's a quarterly meeting that the mayor, vice mayor will have with.
There was some stuff. You know about how a lot more people at the meetings, meetings are a little bit harder to handle. That stuff.
Yeah, and there, there are also questions from my mom, timing for coming back from COVID. I don't think there's anything particularly unexpected or. Yeah, I, I don't have my notes. I haven't elsewhere.
Okay, is that it?
That's it. That's all I have.
Okay, I've had three meetings. With my other job, which is the CCAG ED search committee. We actually interviewed six candidates on, was it last Friday? Yeah, it was all day. It was like nine to 4:30. And from the three, there were two panels. We were one panel A, and then there was, was a panel of professionals. Panel B. And then we got together and talked and we advanced, we all, we had three top candidates and we advanced two. Then we had to have a special meeting of panel A, that's when, you know, the electeds about what questions to ask the two candidates. Then we had to interview the two candidates. And from that meeting. We chose one preferred candidate and that candidate will come before the board tomorrow night in a closed session. Let's see what else. A lot. So you're going to be happy to hear that a lot of my reports have already been reported on. The committee chairs, let me see if there's anything from my notes. Craig Taylor said something that a lot of people have said before. Is there a way so that everyone who is there can see who is also there? You know, the, yes. Yeah, a lot of it, there was a lot of fire stuff. That Jeremy talked about, CPAW, I love that one. CPAW, right? Cameras with AI.
Yeah, I can speak.
So there was, there's, it was a meaty discussion. People were pretty animated. They talked the whole time. We talked about evacuation. Oh, the fire clearing in town where people are clear cutting. Co, the whole idea of the code compliance cause, which you already heard about from Laura. Oh, and BBTS is having an event on May 22nd. Did you say that, Craig? Okay. Okay. Then, oh, I had another, this was another one of, one of my other boards, the Express Lanes Board. They hired a design firm to brand the express lanes. And um, the design firm wanted to interview all the board members, and I thought for forty-five minutes, uh, to me, it was a logo, right? No, 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 no. I mean, it was a really in-depth interview for maybe it was close to an hour so that they can kind of figure out, when you see the express, express la- uh, lanes like logo and tagline, you feel like, oh, this is gonna save me time and I'm saving the environment and I'm helping uh, people who live in uh, disadvantaged communities, and it's like, wow, if you can do that, that will be something to see. The Insurance Commissioner, I want to see if we, there was, what I thought was, he was very, very excited about people doing work on their property. He was not happy that people who were doing on their work on their property in places like Portola Valley are losing their insurance. He says, he al- the only way you could force the insurance companies to to like not drop people would be an act through, you'd have to have legislation, and that's not gonna happen because of the insurance lobby. So the only way he could influence it is when they come before him for a rate, rate review, is that what it's called? Yeah. And he, he does try to hit them hard then. When I was to- my broker was told that you can no longer go to fair, if you are rejected by all the the name-brand insurance companies like State Farm and those, um, and you have to go to, you cannot go to Fair Plan, you first have to exhaust surplus lines. Surplus lines are Lloyds of London, Scottsdale, very expensive. I don't even think, there, it's a whole different network, I don't even think you're it's that, what did he say, it's not even insured by the, I don't know what. It's not great, that's not true. Fair Plan cannot tell people that you have to go to surplus line, so if any of you lose your insurance and they tell the broker that you have to first be rejected by surplus lines, that's not true. So he talked a lot about the importance of home hardening. Um, it was, talked a lot about things that we're doing in towns, which I found really encouraging. He was not happy about um, places like Portola Valley being asked to add more housing um, when the insurance market is so unstable. He, I mean, he was really not happy about that, which was surprising to me. So we have a champion in the Insurance Commissioner's office. And the Council of Cities. Anna Esch presentation, she did talk, she updated us about what's happening and some of it overlapped some of the Jackie stuff we get on our bi-weekly county call. But she also talked about her, she wants to get rid of, she wants to bring salt back. You know how we all lost that under the Trump administration, it was really hard in the, in the blue states where our property values are so high. She wants um, that to be restored, I have no idea if that has a chance. Uh, she was pushing the George Floyd Police Reform Act. Let me see this other stuff. She talked a lot about the CZU Fire. Uh, she talked about the American Jobs Act, we haven't done one in a very long time in Congress. I think she talked about how this is a time to do these really big, big bills that we haven't done for, you know, decades. She talked a lot about the infrastructure stuff. She, I think there was a quote here I really liked. What was it? "The world is watching to see if a democracy can do things together, grow and divet and invest in our own democracy. The autocrats cannot win." She always has those kind of quotes, which I really like. Over business meeting. That is it. So Jeremy, your turn.
Thank you, Mayor Derwin and members of the council. At our next um, council meeting, um, the subcommittee that um, the council put together to work on COVID-related issues of Jeff and John will be presenting some information related to um, the return to the office and flexible work schedule ideas. Something to look forward to. As mentioned earlier, I attended the Open Space Acquisition Committee meeting, it was my last uh, meeting of the PV Donates Tour, so I do plan on bringing uh, forward to the council, um, perhaps on the twenty-sixth, if we have time, but it may be a little later, um, what we heard and uh, refined program and then bring that back out to the committees. I would say overall, uh, committees were pretty pleased with the uh, the idea. Lot of great suggestions related to the types of projects that could be supported by the program. Um, so I'm excited to bring that back to you. Uh, in the next week or so, um, residents of Portola Valley should be receiving a letter from the Fire Marshal, um, it's the annual uh, defensible space letter. I want to thank uh, the Fire Marshal this year for allowing me to with my staff, include some additional information about things that um, are consideration to us, including um, you know, contacting us if people want to know if they need a permit or not. Um, and also the Conservation Committee provided some great language on timing of certain work, um, so I think it was a very important collaborative effort. Our, uh, as you probably saw in the news item a few days ago, our online reservation system is is up and functioning for pickleball. You'll see my, many more of these kinds of services provided in the coming uh, weeks and months. Uh, Brandy DeGarmo, the Assistant to the Town Manager, has just done an outstanding job considering the types of things that we need to put online to make available. She alluded to a few tonight that I will uh, um, let her introduce at a later date. Uh, but I think she's uh, just doing a great job there. Uh, finally, yes, uh, finally, um, Jeff and I attended the Mid Peninsula Regional Open Space District meeting tonight. Uh, it was a special meeting of the body where they were reviewing their wildfire resiliency planning efforts that they've been working on for some time. Uh, they really did a good job um, of identifying the various needs and all of the systems, open spaces, including Windy Hill. So Jeff and I thank them for that work, we thank them specifically for allowing Fire Marshal Buller to participate in the conversations that led to, I think, a really outstanding plan for Windy Hill specifically. And uh, we uh, let them know we stand by to assist them, um, and encourage them to uh, fund and um, execute these uh, mitigation efforts, so um, I'm sure there'll be more engagement on that front. That concludes my report, thank you.
Thanks, Jeremy. Council Digest for April twenty-ninth. Okay, Council Digest for May sixth. Well then, I guess our time together is coming to a close. And we will have to say goodbye to each other, and I will adjourn the meeting.
Good night, everyone. Take care.